I don't know if that can describe you.
Oh, come on. Oh, I'll make up for it.
You have a presence, Charlie.
I'll make up for it in a little bit.
Well, we have one minute. We tend to select on what you do.
Yeah, put it in the capital.
Five thousand dollars clocking it's in.
I'm looking at seven hundred and fifty thousand for a staircase. I'm not quite sure about that one.
All right, I'm gonna call seven o'clock when it gets started.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone to the September fourth way through a planning board meeting. Looks like we need to have someone sit in. Can you sit in as an alternate, Dave?
Okay.
Thank you very much, Stella. All right, we don't have any public hearings or conceptual reviews on the agenda. So the first thing we have is for business, the CIP committee. And before we get started, I just want to say thank you again for all the hard work that you've done with this. It is super appreciated. This is very, very valuable for the town, and I know it's a lot of work. And you get to meet with a lot of folks across the, across the town that, you know, that work for the town. So I want to say thank you before you even start going through this.
All right, mind if we come up?
Yeah, no, absolutely. If everyone wants to come up, you're certainly welcome.
So this is it, the big prestigious capital improvement planning committee. Tom Daniels. So first, I thought I'd just share with the board as well as members of the public that might be watching, a little bit about the capital improvement planning committee and what we do. So we're a planning tool for the community. We forecast major infrastructure improvements and other areas of needed community investment. The capital improvement planning is a plan, is an advisory document that can serve a number of purposes. Among those are to guide the select board, school board, budget committee in the annual budgeting process. It's to contribute to the stabilization of the town's real property tax rate, aid in prioritizing, coordinating, and sequencing various municipal improvements. Like the old famous, you know, let's not put in, pave a road and then have the water department or the sewer department dig up the road after we get done paving it. So we have that perspective of looking at everything from the Gaffney Library projects to the school, to the town, everything in the community. Obviously, it provides an informational, sorry, I feel like it. Information to residents, business owners, developers, you know, they can go online, go to our town website and see the capital improvement plan. And then lastly, this is really one of the, I think, the critical parts that does get thought about, but it is important to what and why we have capital improvement plan and why it falls under the planning board is it provides the necessary legal basis and continued administration and periodic updates involving impact fees. So should our talent ever get involved with a project that is of that magnitude, we have the capability to look at impacting, putting in place impact fees. In the absence of a capital improvement plan, that becomes very difficult, if not possible, if not impossible. I'm not sure of all those rules, but so that's kind of what we are. Again, we are advisory. We don't ultimately make any decisions. You know, probably our biggest role in all of this is, you know, as you mentioned, Doug, we met with ten different departments altogether. I think there were twelve different people that we met with to gather all of this information and compile it. And we really, what we really try to focus on is need versus want. You know, we really try to spend a lot of time. And now that we've done this consistently with this same group, Don, this is his second year, but Mary and I have done it for, I've done it for five or six now. So we've, we've set that expectation. Don't come in with, with projects that, that are filled with fluff. We were a very frugal town. We look very carefully at all of our big projects and, you know, but most importantly too, you know, we really challenge them to look beyond next year. And sometimes that's the hardest part, you know, what, what about four years from now? Five years from now, especially when you look at big, major projects like fire trucks or roof for the school or things like that that take, that will take years and years and years to develop the funding for. Really challenging to make sure that they're looking at all of those different projects. So in front of you is our draft. So this is what came from all of the meetings that we had. And it's, it's obviously been shared with all the department heads. Once we meet with them, they get their section sent to them for them to review and to make sure that we captured all of it correctly. One thing to keep in mind when you do look at this, you know, Charlie made it to come, is we include all the projects regardless of the funding mechanism. So some of the projects here don't impact the tax rate. So for example, we have the Gaffney Library and we have the Samborville Water Precinct. We also have projects that are grant driven or projects that might ultimately be covered by donations or fundraising. Those are all included here so that the community knows that there's big, major projects going on. That's the purpose of it. And then the funding mechanism, we identify on each one of those pages. But it doesn't, not all of these projects necessarily mean that they're coming from taxpayer, the taxpayers. So the first couple of pages are, are just summary sheets updated with the current capital reserves, if there are any. We do list all the capital reserves on this document, even if there's no project planned to remove funds from that particular capital reserve. Again, just to educate the community that we do as a, as a, as a town, we do set funds aside and we are careful about planning for our future. That's part of that stabilization part, right? We don't, we don't want these big peaks and valleys in our project, in our taxes. First couple of ones are, are, you know, assessing is the statistical update. You see that we've already been setting some funds aside. We're actually based on conversations with that department. The amount of money they're gonna need for the next three years is actually down from what was provisionally projected because of the approval over the last two years that the Warren Articles. Building inspector in another couple of years is gonna need a new vehicle. That twenty sixteen isn't gonna keep going forever. So we've got, we've got funding in there starting in twenty twenty eight. Then you move into some of the bigger projects, the ten wheel dump trucks, ten wheel dump truck for the town. One, one was replaced this year, but we've got a, there's another one that if you go back historically, we bought two ten wheel dump trucks the exact same year in twenty nineteen. So we're challenged with that still existing. One was replaced this year because it had a catastrophic failure and needed to be replaced. Second one, you see there, there's the six wheeler, there's the need, heavy equipment, even though I don't have, it's a, that covers a lot of things, but you'll see that fat is in there. Front end loader is the next project that they're looking at. And some of these are very expensive. So what you see is sort of the plan of how we're gonna gradually set aside funds to accumulate the money to pay for. Bailer at the DPW, they just got, at the transfer station, they just got a second one. And with the addition of a third one, they'll actually be able to bail all of the major recycling materials at the transfer station. So they got one for cardboard. This year they added one for aluminum. And then this one would be added and it would be for plastic. So the exciting thing about that is that with that third one, it could create a huge labor savings for the transfer station because they spend an awful lot of time on Thursday moving all these materials. They literally scoop them up off the, you know, we put them in a chute, they all end up on the ground. And then they have to scoop them up, bring them over to a baler, bail them all up. So by having this, it eliminates all that work that they do on Thursdays.
So they have two right now and they want to purchase a third one. What do they use right now for plastics?
Nothing. So, oh, well, no, it gets dropped in, they scoop it all up. And as I understand it, then they bring it to one of the other bailers. They bail it in those other bailers and then they throw it in the building in the back. So by having, so that's the labor part of it. That's what they spend Thursdays doing is they're literally scooping all that stuff off, stuff, you know, once you throw it past the wall, they're scooping it up with the front end loader.
Do you know how much we spend for them to do that? Okay.
Well, no, because it's, well, that would be a little hard to quantify, I think, at this point because the, right, because that's, that's what those, that's, in essence, that's what they do Thursday. Thursdays they're doing that. And then they also, I think Thursdays is when they haul to Rochester.
I understand if we don't have hard data, it's just kind of speculation on how much time they spend.
There was some information that was shared as part of that, but we did not include it here because we didn't think it was necessarily appropriate to share that in this document. More of a, I get reminded at home all the time to stay in the lane. This lane is the CIP lane. So that's a budget committee lane.
Don't we look these CIPs over or you just presenting them to us? Are you gonna present them?
Ultimately, it's up to the planning board to, we have been, right, the planning board is.
You say we, you mean?
Us. We have, you know, we were, I don't know, we were appointed by the planning board. I mean, in, and this is not saying this wrong, planning board member is supposed, is part of our committee, but because we meet during the day, we have not had a planning board member as part of our committee for.
What is the planning board role in the, yeah.
Because it's a planning document.
Yeah, okay.
That's why it falls under the planning board. There are some municipalities where it falls under the select board, but most it falls under the planning board.
And my understanding is our role tonight is to review this and if we believe that it's reasonable and we pass this on to the select.
Right, it would be, it would be ultimately passed on to budget committee, selectmen, school board, all the department head, I mean, have it.
I would think it would be a hard decision for us, where we're not part of it, that we would take your recommendation.
Right, I mean, you're, you know, for example, you're talking about, you know, the project you brought up is a project that's not scheduled to be purchased until twenty twenty nine. So it's, it's, and it's not the funding for it will start for another year. So like a lot of these projects, and you see it like in the school, in the case of the school where they've got boilers and HVAC equipment, you know, those are huge projects for them. You know, they, they give us very preliminary numbers. We've been setting money aside without hard estimates.
And you wouldn't be able to hold an estimate for that amount of time anyway, because if you're not doing something, you're just throwing, you know, it's a guessing game to begin with.
Yeah, I mean, every once in a while, you know, a good example was Park and Rec. You know, they came in with, you know, what you'll see in here, they have a tractor for the ball fields. You know, she came in with an estimate from a company for that tractor.
And would you get rid of who mows it now?
That wasn't, no, it's not, the purpose is not to be mowed.
Okay.
So the, but again, you're, you're asking questions that are beyond the scope of our.
Well, if we have to be involved and then I have questions, that's all. I don't know if you have to answer them or not, but I mean, I'm just, I have some questions.
Sure, and you, yeah, go ahead, yep.
And when I see a baler that we just purchased last year, right? We approved that one, is that correct?
Right.
And they want a third baler. I'd just like to see some hard data of the actual time and money that we spend right now on those Thursdays.
It's not so much, it's not so much money spent as it is money saved by having that.
Well, we would save that money. But we would save what we spend today and we could project what we are gonna spend.
Right. Those are budget questions.
Those are budget questions.
Okay.
All right, so you're, you're getting it, that's why I say that.
That's why I was trying to understand what our, what our, what our plan is. So we just kind of see an overhead of it.
Right, you're, you're looking at the plan and, I mean, if you were to see something that, I mean, and you.
So we don't have to agree to this stuff, pretty much.
Oh, no, no.
It's a living document.
No, no.
It's nothing carved in, in stone either. These are just suggestions that we, to follow if we want to ever purchase.
The department heads are coming to us and saying, this is what I think we need. And then we push back and say, do you really need it or do you just want it? And we go through a whole process with them. But, but we don't ask for, you know, like, you know, we don't ask for cost justification. That's not our, our role here.
I would think that they would justify it, though.
No.
Not at this level.
Typically, cap is.
They will, they will have to when it comes to purchasing.
Yes, right. I mean, it's, it's like the cost estimates, you know, Alyssa went out and got that one cost for a tractor for Park and Rec. You know, if that got funded and the money set aside, I mean, that goes out to bid, you get multiple bids in, there's a whole nother process to it. You know, we're just looking for all of these. We ask them to come in with a ballpark estimate, either something in writing, you know, so that's all these documents back here are all the sheets that they fill out and give us that have all of that kind of information, you know, what it's gonna cost and, and, and at least sometimes one estimate.
And then the selectman will make the final decision on what goes out to Warren?
Oh, yeah. I mean, and the school.
Well, let's not say it's not the final, but it'll be, it will be in our suggestion, our section, and then the budget committee will have their opinion and then it goes out to the voters.
Right, there's a multi-step process, right?
So the, this is all great information in the back, but the key for the town is to use front end pages. Because basically what it says is, you know, give or take, some projects are gonna go forward, some aren't, some are gonna get moved. It's a plan, it's meant to change. But the idea is at the end of the column, you can theoretically look and say, okay, well, the town, it looks like the town is gonna need a budget for X amount of capital in, in year twenty seven. And then, well, we can't afford that or we don't want, we don't want to do that. It'll affect the tax rate or whatever. Then the budget committee and the selectmen take the plan and say, okay, well, yeah, I think we need that, but we gotta move it out a year or are you sure that, you know, we can't get a better number than that? So, I mean, these are all very preliminary cost estimates.
And you'll, you'll see some of that even as this year comes.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the school is probably a little tighter in that regard than the town is because the school, it's one, well, it's a big entity, but it's one meeting. So, you know, there we do get into a little more, you know, what if, what, you know, if they came forward, I'll give you, let's say they came forward with these projects and like Dick said, you looked at these first couple of sheets and you add it up and came to eight hundred thousand dollars. We would be sitting right in that meeting saying, there is no way the taxpayers are gonna approve that. So we would, you know, so we would push, the CIP committee would push back just saying, you know, guys, you can't put these projects in because there's no way you can fund them. So, you know, we would be uncomfortable with it. The town has a lot more moving parts to it, so it's much harder for us to sit there and say, well, DPW, don't put your projects in because fire department has a big need.
No, no, they're giving their needs.
That's with the selectmen.
The boilers that are listed here was first put on the CIP in twenty ten when I was on the CIP committee. And I think the estimate was thirty thousand and it spins from twenty, I mean, so those prices really were just a marker at that.
They're typically only good for thirty days anyways. And if you could get somebody to give you a two year warranty on that price, give me the number.
We expected to have to replace those boilers within, within five years when they first went on the CIP and haven't had to yet.
I was just, I was just wondering.
And this, the document, what we do during our meeting, we gather the information and just put it in here. For the CIP plan, there are items in here where you're not gonna put money in, but down the road, if someone, you know, you don't want to surprise the town, unless it's an emergency, you don't want to surprise the town and, oh, we need, you know, three hundred thousand dollars, we need it now. That's a huge impact.
Yeah, no, we, we ask these entities in town to look out ten years or five years. Typically, it's five years with cap is, and we ask them, what do you think your needs are gonna be? It costs these.
Yeah.
Yeah, I totally understand how capital.
The hard part is you said, because we talked about it at our last meeting, you know, it's, it's making sure that we.
You try to.
We're all involved with other things in the community. With the CIP committee, and we try to really stay right there.
And you guys are trying to project what that cost will be in two thousand and nine, twenty nine.
Yeah. But I think, kind of to piggyback on what's been said here is, I think it's a great exercise that the town goes through and the departments go through once a year that actually stop, take a look and say, what might we need?
Oh, you have.
In the next two years, in the next five years.
You have.
Because day to day, like, you don't do that, right? But this makes those departments think about that, gets put down on paper, it's a chance to take a look at it and say, is that reasonable or not, right? So I look at this as, this is a tool. This is a tool to understand what the town might need the next, whatever, one to five years and can afford it.
This is, this happens in every business.
Preparing for disaster. You need to pay if something happens.
Yes, and they ought to be surprised by it. So.
Well, in the town, the different departments are talking about big projects. And the school is kind of over here, so if the school decides, well, let's do a big project, it's somebody in the town doing a big project, if you didn't have the CIP to, you know, kind of say, we can do that next year and the year after. And it could be a really rough on tax.
I was just wondering what our mechanism was here on this.
Right, yeah.
That's what my question was. I understand how capital, you know, these things work. Thank you.
So again, just, you know, as you're going through it, you know, you'll, again, you'll see a mixture of projects that are grant driven. You know, the police department, so for example, the police department, we've got the laptop computers and that's in here, but, you know, those are scheduled to be replaced this year and those are gonna be handled through a grant. But nonetheless, it's a project, it's important, you know, this, this provides a communication piece to the community to say, you know, this stuff is getting, you know, we're, we're keeping our police department updated with current technology. And oh, by the way, it's also being paid for by a grant. So they're aware that these things are happening. So we move through the police department, then into some of the things at the public safety building, which our chief Fenton, our chief of police, also is responsible for working with the CIP committee on the public safety building. So he's got projects in here that go out, go out to twenty thirty. So windows, doors, you know, that building, just like a home, you know, that building is, is at that point where all of the major infrastructure pieces are all, you know, so, you know, it was the roof, you have doors, you have the window, floor was done this year, you got doors, windows, furnace is being done this year, you know, air, air conditioning is on here. So it's just all that's, all those big things are twenty, twenty-five year replacements and we're at that point with that building. And then you move into the school and you see the different projects there. A couple of these projects with the school were projects that they started and have run into some challenges with them. And so some of these were started and now need to be completed. So there's the school portion of it, desks, boilers, which are a lot more money. The challenge with the boilers with the school is that they're in the, they're in the ceiling. So they're gonna have to actually go in, probably have to go in through the roof. So it's, it's a.
Isn't that one downstairs?
There's one downstairs and two up. So, and the two up are the ones, the two up are the ones that are a problem. So you, they can't replace one, they gotta do both and it's gonna be big.
Those are the propane ones, right?
Right, it's gonna be big bucks.
I think they did talk about moving those two. Yeah, so anyway, but that's not.
Yep. So, you know, we're moving through some of the town stuff, town hall. Charlie, you mentioned the, the fire escape and that's in there, that would be a grant project and it's just in there so that we don't forget about it.
I was more of a joke. It just seemed like an awful big number for.
And that's just a pure guess.
Why can't you just throw a rope?
We could. You know, but that, you know, that ties into the WPI that at one point was a funding mechanism. So we keep it on there because, you know, hopefully at some point that group will reiterate.
If that comes back to wish, these come off of here and kind of go on, some of these would, funded by the WPI?
Yeah, well, because it involves, even though it's handled by a nonprofit, it's still a town building, so it probably, until it, if the project actually started, it would be removed from here. So as soon as a project started, like, like the furnace at the public safety building was in the CIP last year. It's, it's, it just got approved by the select board last meeting, so it, it's been removed. It, it literally hasn't been put in, but it's not, it's gonna be done by twenty twenty six. So then you see some other, some other things involving town buildings. We do keep the money that the town contributes to AWWA for the invasive species, I shouldn't say AWWA, AWWA helps consolidate those. It's actually, the money goes directly to the lake and funds, most of it goes to the lake host program. In theory, it's an invasive species fund, so it could be used for other things, but that's where the majority.
I thought it goes to New Hampshire lakes.
Actually, this goes, the money itself goes to the lake associations and then the lake associations use that money to pay for the lake hosts. Lake, New Hampshire Lakes pays for some of the lake host program, but not all of it. The associations have to pay a portion of it, which. The associations have to pay a portion of it, which.
Back to the certificate.
Which in essence is the taxpayer portion of it. Most of them, quite honestly, are, are three-way done. Some of it's coming from New Hampshire lakes, just outright.
Yep.
Some of it is coming from the lake association's own money, and then some of it's coming from the town through this. So you might see a town, higher upon, getting three thousand dollars, but then the association has contributed money, and New Hampshire lakes has contributed money to pay for the whole thing. Well, the lake, you know, they staff seven days a week, I don't know how many hours every day, but it's, they, they spend a lot of money manning that ramp. And then again, the last couple of years, we've pulled in some of these, some of the entities that have impacts in our community. So we have the library here, the Gaffney Library, which, although, again, not, you know, it's a privately-owned 501(c)(3) organization. And then last, we finish with the water precinct, which again, is a member-owned organization, you know, the village of San Borro, and the people that are connected to the system. So those are not necessarily taxpayer funds, but it's good to see what those organizations and groups are doing in terms of large projects, and keeping our infrastructure up and modernized. Particularly the water precinct, which has done tremendous job over the last four or five years. You know, they really, really pulled that system out of, out of despair, and have done a fantastic job with that. And, and they are, you know, they're doing a good job setting money aside for some pretty big projects that, that still need to be done.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, every year, there's a huge number put in there for a sewage treatment plant. Is there a, but there's never a date as to which, I mean, at some point, isn't the state gonna mandate that the existing lagoons be.
Yeah, so we got an update, so we got an update from Brock Mitchell, DPW director, on that project. It is moving forward faster. They have more of a definitive plan and idea, and they're, and they've started to pursue one particular idea that is gonna involve some grant money, and potentially having a system put in place that would involve, don't take this word the wrong way, but it would be a regional system. So we would, if, so the grant funding would come to us as a priority, and then we would allow for fee, some of our neighboring communities to tap into our system.
Mandate.
So, the, 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 it was a little, it was very much down the road in prior years. So even though it doesn't look like much changed on the CIP, a lot has changed. So there's, there's a definite plan. I know that Brock has talked to the select board about moving forward with getting some engineering done. They've got a plant idea, and he has an idea of a plant that is basically a built-off site, trucked in, plunked down.
This is all still, this is all still.
All very preliminary.
Litigation in the, in the system. Our senator and stuff are all very intent on this right now, as we speak, of, of trying to figure out the best way to, because they know that a town of our size can't afford a ten, twenty, thirty million dollar project. You know, so they're, they're reducing that in some way to allow us to be affordable, to be able to do something to meet some of the standards, because we're never gonna be able to afford a thirty, forty, fifty million dollar transplant.
That's today.
Yeah, and that's today.
Five years ago.
Exactly. And, and it's still, like he said, it's still not on the table, it's just, it's being very much talked about more than it was last year as a decision.
The, the, the number on the CIP changed.
Yeah, okay.
There's only about three people that will actually know that it changed. I'm one of them, because I'm the one who changes the numbers. You know, so Brock has, you know, there's a tighter estimate there, based on these conversations that he's had with the state, and with, you know, now he's actually talking to vendors, and there's, there's numbers that are being floated around, but the timing of it is still very loose, because it's grant, it's grant dependent.
So this is just a curiosity question, but are we, or would a, a new plant be close enough to other towns that have town sewer to make it viable, that they send it this way? Like, I don't know.
Well, it would, it would, it would help the surrounding towns. Also, it would be somewhat profitable for us to pay back ourselves, but it would, it would, it would eliminate having ten towns in our surrounding area, spend thirty million on, on it. We'd kind of join together, and I think, and I'm not saying I'm right, but I think that these other towns that may be involved may have some contribute, contribution to it.
So I, so I get all that, I just, so I think of, like.
So don't, don't think in terms of pipes in the, in the street, okay? Because the vast amount of sewage that ends up in a plant in a rural area like this is septic.
Yeah, it's trucked in.
And it used to be. It's not piping from Osiphe. No, no, that's come by, that comes by pumping, no, it's all pumping.
Milton and Ops, Osiphe are the two towns that would be the most logical, maybe Brookfield, Brookfield.
Tamara, Osiphe.
Going up north, I can't go, I was forgetting Effingham, is it Effingham?
Freedom.
Effingham, Freedom, Freedom, right?
No, no, thank you.
They, they go away, they weigh in at the transfer station, and then they go over and dump their stuff.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, no, great, thank you.
We'll send somebody to step on this.
No, that, you're.
Anyway, you've done a very good job. You know, the nice thing for us, at least, it makes us feel good, first, we, you know, we certainly appreciate Doug's comments, but, you know, it's nice when we sit down for our meetings, and, you know, and, and this document is in a three-ring book, that, you know, the police chief, you know, you know, he's using it as, you know, so that's, I think, a good thing, right? Is that they're using it as a tool, just like we hope, you know, again, the, the selectmen are not gonna approve this just out of its weight.
It makes you believe that these are things they need.
But they, but they look at it, and, and, you know, they hold on to it, they say, oh, okay, that, okay, now I get it, I understand that.
The more years that somebody participates in preparing this, the more real it gets, the more serious people are about, let's not just throw in five projects. And I think years ago, that, I don't know, some of the department heads, well, maybe not as, quite as careful. I think that they've learned through the last committee and your committee that, hey, this is a serious document.
So Jimmy Howie and I on the first committee, and we were on it like fourteen years, and they didn't, most of them didn't even want to meet with us.
Right, exactly.
You know, it was a slow process.
And now it's something that, that if they're using it themselves, then it, now it's real.
Well, they know Mr. Kami is on there now, things are gonna take effect.
I have to say, when, when this group took over, especially Marion and Tom, this was much, much more detailed than what we had, ours was pretty basic, but they've done a fantastic job on this. You get it, Roland?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason that this comes to the planning board first, rather than directly to the selectmen, is that I think the statutes put CIP under town planning boards.
It does.
So that's, our, our role is to review this for, you know, these, this is a reasonable expectation for the town, and, but we don't have any fiscal responsibility. We don't set the tax rate, we don't appropriate money.
No, it's part of this.
We're just moving it.
We move it from, from, with a conduit, to put it before the budget committee and the select.
Yep, so we do ask, you know, now that you've been, so we met earlier to, for our group to approve the final document, because this is the first time we actually saw it. We just finished this. Amber, Amber was sent it this morning, twice, once with it, without the attachment. But, so, and then we, we asked for the planning board to approve it, and then it becomes an official planning document.
See, then, we're just approving that administratively, it's complete?
Yeah, right, yes. It has nothing to do, just like we don't have anything to do with the dollars, there's no.
No, you're just putting the plan together.
Putting the plan together.
Yeah.
Well, you did a damn good job.
Yeah.
Because it's very informal.
Not easy to own with caps.
You've, you've touched bases on about everything, so that's a good thing.
We hope we do.
And it gives, it gives a chance for people to actually see the things that we do need, and, and hopefully, hopefully, we're able to accomplish at least most of them.
They can make an educated decision, and they're able to vote.
And I'll make a motion to approve this document.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great work.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Nice to see you, Don.
Thank you.
So, next on our agenda, I think Jen, are you on? Hi, Jen. All right, so we have, next on the board, business updated draft of zoning amendments. Jen, if you wanna walk us through those.
Sure, in the interest of time, you have everything that's what we've reviewed last, last meeting, plus a few new things. I've highlighted the new things to just touch on tonight, that are either new or revisions to what you reviewed last meeting. I'm going to start by jumping to page four. So, last meeting, when we talked, I, in, in that draft, I hadn't seen anything that was glaring that needed to be revised to comply with this new statutory change. However, after kind of reading through things again, and talking to some of my colleagues, we thought that it'd be safe to make some minor adjustments to the definitions section of the ordinance, and so what we've done is strike anything that defines housing typologies based upon families, because statute does not allow us to say, it must be a family living there, it just has to be a household. You can have unrelated people living together in a household. So that's, these are really simple, so under the definition of dwelling, it just strikes a family maintaining, and it just says, a household. Instead of defining family, we now just say, a household. It's people who live together in a dwelling unit. There is one other change, though, that I caught, that I've put in here, that's not driven by this particular statute. It is, if you see under multifamily, I struck four and changed it to five. By definition, in the workforce housing statute, you have to, they start counting multifamily in the workforce housing statute as five units or more. So by capping it at four, you are not compliant with the workforce housing statute. So I, all I did was bump it up by one to be compliant. That said, I will say, I usually recommend that communities go to six instead of five. The reason being, typically, we don't build multifamily structures with an odd number of units in them. It's rare. So that's just something you can consider. Other comments before I move on?
No, that makes a good sense to me.
So, yeah, if, if it's five, that's what the statute requires, and it could still be six, so.
No, but you're just, so you're, by setting this, the definition of multifamily to be a building containing three to five dwelling units, you're not allowing more than five in a building.
Or a single building.
It's a single structure, you're capping it at five units.
Three to five dwelling units, are you?
And statute says five or more, so five is the bare minimum to be compliant.
Okay.
And she's right, that if you were building a building, it wouldn't be an odd number. You'd, you'd want, you'd, you'd want, you'd go boom, 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 boom.
Right, it would make sense.
It makes sense to do the six.
All right, so I'll change, I'll make it six.
Yeah.
Anyone okay with that? I mean, I, I, I understand what you're saying, Charlie.
Yeah. It's just a bill and trade, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm going to now scroll to the home-based childcare facilities. I'm gonna scroll to here, page seven. So this is just some minor changes based to incorporate our conversation from last meeting. I've actually removed language that was, that was proposed amendments, based on that conversation. And so the consensus last meeting was to allow home daycare facilities as a permitted use, no conditional use permits for them. And so all I've, the, you'll see there's some sections where there's no red lines that are, that are highlighted in yellow. Those were ones where last meeting, I had incorporated the home daycare facilities within those sections to be part of the conditional use permit. That's removed. To keep it simple, go straight through the process, I will note now, a home daycare facility will not come to the planning board, which is what we talked about last meeting. They will only, of the subsequent standards that they will have to comply with, they will only have to comply with be general criteria. Sound good?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna scroll now to page seven. This is, this is one of the ones that I mentioned at the last meeting that I still needed to look at. This is Senate Bill 95, camp cabins, and the state building, and fire codes. The main thing here for, for you, the planning board, in, as a zoning amendment, is by statute, they have said that camp cabins can, are allowed up to a maximum of two stories above, above ground. What I did is I incorporated.
Jen, Jen just walked, page eleven, I think, seven.
Yeah, page eleven, thank you, sorry about that. Okay, so what I did to incorporate this change is, at the bottom of table three, on building heights, I added a new footnote. The thirty-five feet would still apply, but then it will also note that a maximum of two stories above grade. So, and that, I wrote FSA, and it should say RSA. This is not a healthcare thing.
I guess, I, I guess my question on that, it would be, what makes the difference if it's four stories or, or two stories, if, as long as we, we have a height limit?
Yeah, so statute, statute said two stories, and it's a trade-off. Because what statute did is said that you do not have to sprinkle or meet other safety codes in a cabin, so, okay, fine, if we're gonna let you not do these things, you're capped at two stories. Is the, is the trade-off.
Okay.
Is this just camping cabins?
It's technically just youth recreation camp cabins.
Okay.
So, so. Yeah, so, and that's, that's a good, that's a good comment, because, so there's that footnote, but then, in article thirteen, I did, there is a whole paragraph relative to recreational campgrounds and camping parks, specific to the dimensional requirements for cabins. And I just added a really brief sentence that says cabins shall be limited to a maximum of two stories above grade. It's almost redundant to include it here.
Four hundred square foot, you're not gonna go three.
No, you're not, you're probably not even gonna go one, or you're not even gonna go two, but.
Sometimes these things are just so.
But, I.
Yeah, so.
Kind of repeating what you had said, like, this is coming down from the state level, this is not.
Correct.
Some of this doesn't necessarily make common sense, but we need to follow what the state has put forward.
And that's happened.
So, okay, all right.
All right.
Yep.
So Senate Bill 284, we, last month, we, or not last month, last meeting, we talked about the parking requirements and the development regulations. However, to be extra safe and double-check myself, I did some additional word searches in your zoning ordinance, and there are two places. there are two places in zoning that have a higher number of required parking spaces per dwelling unit, so in your open space cluster development, development standards, item seven, and this is literally just page thirteen, we just scrolled on to the next page, for the parking requirements, you currently say two spaces per dwelling unit, you can only allow one per dwelling unit, so made that change. Similarly, in housing for older persons, there was a sentence in there about, oh wait, there, there's further down, I'll come back, so I'm going to go down to G, parking, on, at the end of this section on page fourteen, there was a provision that required a minimum of 2.25 spaces, and I just said one per dwelling unit. I'm going to scroll back up, though, yes.
Yeah, could, just to, I want to make sure I'm understanding this right, so on Article twelve, C, number seven for parking, one space is required, and we're saying here, that space has to be enclosed either in a attached.
Ooh, do you want?
It's a, that's what it's.
Do you want to strike the garage?
I don't know, so, I, open space cluster development, I don't, all right, this isn't.
Honestly, I would strike the garage, because like, you're telling people they have to build a garage, like.
So, I thought I remember something about housing for older folks, people, when I'm a.
Yeah, that's, that's, there's something else there, too.
And I, I guess I sort of understood that, right? Somebody gets older, maybe they don't want to clear the snow off their, their car, you know, but for a open space cluster development, I think we'd want to leave that up to the developer on whether they want to add garages or not. I mean, in this, in this area of the country, like, that's probably going to happen anyways, right? I don't know, what other, it's, it's a question, I'm not.
Everybody needs a garage, they shouldn't have any restrictions.
Okay.
And it's probably because of the spaces.
Well, we're trying, with, well, as a development, we're trying to generate less costly development, right?
Yeah.
So, less costly units.
Right.
Ultimately, if it costs less to build, adding a garage seems like we're just running the price up.
Are we saying, making it mandatory that you have to add a garage?
Well, this says that.
Yeah, see, I don't think you should make anybody do the garage. I think everybody needs a garage, but I don't think you make it mandatory that you have to have one.
Get rid of it.
Yeah.
Okay, I deleted that sentence.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, housing for older persons as well, so, it, housing for older persons required an awful lot of parking, so, I, it, just to be compliant with statute, item G down at the end there, page fourteen, just change it to one space of off-street parking shall be provided per dwelling unit.
So, that, because that's by statute, we have to, we have to say that, right?
Correct.
Is there anything that talks about parking for visitors?
No.
And we probably can't require that, is that correct?
No.
Okay.
I don't believe you can.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to just flag a couple other things here in housing for older persons, and if we can scroll back up to page thirteen, you'll see that I made that same change of maximum of four, and changed it to five. I think you have a little bit more flexibility here. By statute, you probably could leave it at four, I'm not a fan of tempting fate, so I made that same consistent change with multifamily to five. However, you guys said make that six, so that's something to discuss. The other piece I deleted is the whole sentence, which talks about the number, the maximum number of people who can live in a dwelling unit. That kind of gets back to that other bill that addressed the number and relationship of people living in, in dwelling units, in which you cannot regulate that.
Yeah.
So.
I think what you're, what you said, what you're saying like that, that maximum number of five, like, that's an odd number, does that make sense, right? Like, should we limit it to, should we go to, should we stay at four, or do we go to six? Because from, I guess, efficiency of building, a building with multiple units, you, you'd want to put them kind of back-to-back, right? You wouldn't want an odd number, is that?
This isn't, this is, this is people, right? Five?
Nope, that is dwelling units in the structure, so, again, it was.
Yeah, if we, if we, if we're going to move the other one to six, then that probably makes sense to go from five to six.
Gotcha.
Okay.
All right, done. Okay. I think that is it.
Those are all zoning changes, correct?
Yeah, I had no further development regulation changes.
Okay.
And I just, and advisory items, Doug and I did a little bit more looking at the private and classics roads, and I just, there's some yellow highlights there, it's just I modified my words from the last meeting, but again, there's no changes that you need to make.
Okay.
Okay, so, for the zoning changes, I think what I'll do is, the one thing we need to look at is like, how do we package these as warrant articles? So, I might play with that a little behind the scenes, and then just kind of present a slightly cleaner version that takes out like, a lot of the just background notes that were here for us, maybe we'll keep that for like, a voter guide, and just forget it, so it's looking like something that we could post. We don't want to hold a first hearing on this, though, until November, so.
Right, yeah.
Or December, even.
Okay. Just as FYI, I do have a message out to our code enforcement officer, to Peter, if you want to talk to him about, he had, I talked to him a while back, and he had some suggestions about some possible.
Yes.
And so, clarifications, and so, he was on vacation this week, but I'll talk to him next week, and either get a list from him and/or maybe ask him to come to a future meeting to have a discussion with us.
Love it, okay. Yeah, so let's just hold, like, these will just hold on until we have any other zoning items squared away.
All right, so, all right, so are we good from that standpoint for now, Jen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move on, any correspondence?
No.
So, next is public comment, and Tom Daniels, you're on the agenda, short-term rentals.
All right, if I come up?
Absolutely.
Fantastic, thanks. Seventy-five-year-old widow, a retired paint contractor, a forty-year-old couple with two middle school children, and a disabled veteran who served our country in Iran. What do these people all have in common? They're all short-term rental owners here in Wakefield. We invite families to come experience the beauty of Wakefield while creating lasting family memories. They are strangers when they arrive, but many of them become our friends. We provide affordable ways for young and multi-generational families to cost-effectively experience our community, whether to hike our local trails, climb mountains, or swim in our lakes. We provide local places to stay for visiting nurses, traveling linemen, and homeowners displaced by disaster. We are your neighbors and active community members who care deeply about our town. My name is Tom Daniels, I'm a resident of Wakefield. I've been renting my home next door as a short-term rental for twenty years. I'm a member of the Greater Wakefield Chamber of Commerce, and my rental property has been awarded the New Hampshire Lakes, Lakesmart Award. If the board considers regulating short-term rentals in Wakefield, you are layering on top of existing regulations, such as the existing noise and nuisance ordinances. We already have a meals and room permit that all short-term rentals have to have. We pay meals and rental tax, and of course, if we have a campfire, we also have a state of New Hampshire burn permit. Short-term rentals require special home insurance that costs upwards of seventy-five percent more than standard home insurance, not including any additional cost for an umbrella policy, which almost every insurance agent recommends for short-term rental owners. In order to get our policies underwritten through that, we are required to have interconnected smoke detectors, CO2 detectors, and fire extinguishers. These are required by our insurance companies, and we have to comply with them. I've actually had to send them pictures documenting that I have all of those in my home. They don't actually come inspect anymore. In addition to that, under RSA forty-five dash A, semicolon, thirty-nine, if a home has a septic system within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of a water body and is sold, it must be inspected by a licensed septic system evaluator. Our short-term rental properties must be meticulously maintained. There are no to-do lists on our houses. Our success as a short-term rental owner is dependent upon our reviews. Our guests' expectations are that everything must be clean, neat, and working properly all the time. We have incentives built in to make sure that we renovate our product, project, renovate our homes and improve them consistently. We create jobs by hiring local service providers such as cleaners, landscapers, HVAC maintenance contractors, pest control services, septic plow, plowing, trash removal, handyman, and building contractors, to keep our property properly maintained to this very high standard. Without positive reviews, we don't rent our houses. They have to be perfect. We can't afford to have a septic backup. And even though my short-term rental is used less than half the year, I still get my septic pumped out every single year. Guests at our rentals support local businesses. They shop at Country Goods, Level Lake Market, Long Meadow, New Deal, A and B. They eat at our restaurants, Poor People's Publinos, Blue Bay, Tumble Down Farms, and the Natty Pond. Wedding venues, such as Sanborn Hill Farm, Tumble Down Farm, Province Lake Wedding Barn, and the Everly Farm over in Acton, depend on us for their venues, attraction to prospective customers, because without us, there's no place for the wedding guests to stay. There are no rooming alternatives in Wakefield, other than short-term rentals and the seven rooms at the Wakefield Inn. We collect and pay eight-and-a-half percent meals and room tax that comes back to the town of Wakefield. The money we take in from our short-term rentals pays for our mortgages and our taxes, and it goes back into the communities we live. Short-term rentals offset high property taxes with limited use of town services. For example, the cost to educate a student in Wakefield is nineteen thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars, based on the latest data from the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Short-term rentals pay significant property taxes, of which over sixty-three percent go to subsidizing schools, which we have zero impact on. This helps to reduce the tax burden for all residents. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, American Community Service estimates, the total number of housing units in Wakefield is two thousand two-hundred-and-ten. The New Hampshire Housing Report states that three-point-nine percent of them are short-term rentals, which comes out to eighty-six. Based on a review online of Airbnb and Verbo, that number is pretty accurate, based on my knowledge of the short-term rental market here in Wakefield. Now, just to give you a comparison, we're at three-point-nine. Towns such as Lincoln are at forty-two-point-five. Carroll, thirty-six-point-six. Woodstock, twenty-five-point-seven, and Conway at twenty-two-point-eight. Three-point-nine in Wakefield. The New Hampshire Housing Report states that, one of the results of this survey, or this report, states that short-term rentals were converted from housing units that, in, in the definition of the report, from seasonal recreation or occasional use homes. Short-term rentals are not coming from single-family residential homes and being converted to short-term rentals. They're coming from people who have vacation homes and are converting them to short-term rentals, or what is very common is people who buy a home, and it's a stretch for them financially, so they use it part of the time, but then they rent it the remaining part of the time. Short-term rentals, let's see, almost half, short-term rentals are not related to the rise in rental rates, which was another part of that survey, so it has nothing to do, there's no correlation between rental rates and short-term rentals. Almost half of short-term rentals leave, live in the county, and over a third of them live in the town. New Hampshire law explicitly recognizes short-term resident, short-term rentals as residential units uses under RSA thirty, RSA forty-eight dash A, semicolon, one, section five, which defines a short-term rental. When you're considering regulating short-term rentals, think of the legal cost to regulations. The cost to make sure all of these regulations are in compliance with RSA forty-one, semicolon, nine dash A, covers unfit dwellings and expressly states that its power can't be used to impose additional ordinances and restrictions on short-term rentals. RSA six-seventy-four, semicolon, nineteen, and RSA six-seventy-four thirty, which covers grandfathering and non-conforming uses. RSA third, six-seventy-four, semicolon, six and sixteen, section seven, which has just been amended to require one parking space per residence, I think we just heard that earlier, and paragraph eight, which covers occupant restrictions. There's RSA forty-eight dash eight, semicolon, A, which covers enforcement and reiterates that municipalities cannot impose additional requirements on short-term rentals beyond those that apply to all residential dwellings. And then there's the cost of litigation to defend the regulations. There are at least six current pending lawsuits between municipality and short-term rental owners in New Hampshire, and one that has made it all the way to the federal level and is still pending. Madison, Conway, and Sunapee have spent significant six-figure number sums in court over misguided short-term rental regulations. Give the state legislator time to untangle the ambiguity of all of the current RSAs that I just referenced earlier that impact short-term rentals. The only people that will be happy about short-term rental regulations will be drumming woodsom for the amount of billing hours that they will get over this. Who's going to enforce these regulations, and who's going to cover that cost, and why? What is the board looking to try to accomplish by looking at regulating short-term rentals, and why target just eighty-six properties in our town? In conclusion, short-term rentals have been in Wakefield for over fifty years. You're now looking into regulating and restricting a small segment of our computer, community that is already regulated by existing rules. Any additional regulations on short-term rentals will come at considerable cost with limited benefits to the town of Wakefield. I'm asking you to not impose any new restrictions or regulations on short-term rentals in Wakefield. Should the board decide to pursue, I hope that you create a public engagement process with those of us that would be impacted by such rules, which should focus at most on a simple registration process.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, if you don't mind, I have some questions and maybe some comments. One, thank you for, for coming and preparing that, I think that's, it's super helpful. I, I wish Dave Selcox was here tonight, because he was the one that originally brought this up, and him and I have had some conversations about it, and I'll be honest, like, said I was willing to talk about it, I think it's important for, for the board to discuss some of these things, right? And some of the information that you brought, I think is going to be super helpful in that. I do have some questions around, you know, you stated something around, so, let me back up a second. I think there could be three things that could be important to consider, whether we regulate or not, just from, like, I don't think it's a good idea that people rent out places that have septic systems that are not built to handle the number of people that they are advertising for. And so, my understanding is that the state, what they allow is two people per bedroom plus two. Does that make sense? Does that ring a bell? So, if you have a three-bedroom.
Let me, let me correct you, though.
Yep.
The, the state doesn't regulate by people, it regulates by bathroom, by bedrooms. It's not regulated by, like, you can have five children sleeping in one bedroom, it still doesn't matter, it's regulated by usage of water. And, yes, like, if you had twenty people in a building, you're going to use a little more water, correct?
Right, so, and the reason I say that, because I went and took a look at some Wakefield Sure, right. So, and, and the reason I say that, because I went and took a look at, uh, some Wakefield, um, VRBO and, um, yeah, what's the other one? Sorry.
Airbnb.
Thank you. Airbnb, uh, rental, um, properties. For the most part, what I'm seeing is people are, people are renting out, if they have a two-bedroom, they're, they're saying up to six. If they have a three-bedroom, they're saying up to eight. That minus ten, that, so that fits that calculation to me. I have seen a couple that are two-bedroom that are advertising for twenty. That, that's on a lake. That's, to me, that's not good. I know you don't do that, right? Um, but I'm wondering, like, should we, as a town, be concerned about things like that? Those are, I'd say probably the vast majority of these short-term rentals are on the lakes in town, right? There is huge problems going on at Province Lake right now. And should the town be concerned about, um, it's a question. I'm not, so this is a question. Should the town be concerned about over-usage of septic systems? And is this potentially something that the town should think about? Controlling, regulating? I mean, in some ways, I think it's very useful to understand the amount, or approximate amount of short-term rentals in town. So if there's eighty-six of them, about, give or take, is that a huge administrative burden for the town to have some level of, I don't know, uh, application process to register when you are running a short-term rental? And so that the town could then state, I don't know if it's require and/or, um, strongly suggests, like, okay, based upon the number of bedrooms that you have and the septic system you have, therefore, you should be renting out to no more than this many people, right? So, again, this is just-
And so with your, with your comment,
Yeah.
You use Province Lake as an example. Province Lake is in trouble.
Yes.
It has nothing to do with septic systems. It has something to do with lack of them, okay? Because Province Lake has always, and as long as I've been in this town, has, has PVs. It does not have septic systems. That's the problem with that down there, is that most of the sewerage is in the ground out of PVs, um, just outhouses, okay? It's lack of systems, which, in my mind, I believe that probably all buildings should have septic systems. But that area has been grandfathered, because it's, it's, in, in the state eyes, you can still have a PV as long as you have it designed by an engineer.
Sure.
It's the same thing as what I can build up there myself, but you're just going to have an engineer design it.
Sure, sure.
Do I think that regulations, I don't, I don't, I don't, I think most of these people that, that put twenty can sleep up to twenty. I think that's a, like a, um, I just think that's a, a selling issue, you know? And do I think that's, that's, that's right? I guess that's lying, okay? So I don't, I don't see, I don't, I don't see that as, personally, I don't see that we should dictate what people can do with their home.
Well, if it's a commercial enterprise running out of their home, do you think that that's okay?
Do I think there's a commercial enterprise?
It's a zoning thing, really, when it comes down to the short-term, these, these are zone, I read into this quite significantly. And if a town was gonna go at it, it's a zoning thing, I think.
So it's, um, so first, to, to just backtrack a little bit, you know, I'll, I'll go back to, to-
I read what you had.
Right.
The, the- Earlier.
So.
It's, it's a huge discussion.
Oh, it's great. Use, use it. Short-term rentals are residential uses, so, so-
Right, right. From the state, from the state perspective, that's how they, so-
So if I could, if I could, you know, so I'll make a few, a few comments.
Yep.
You know, first, I'll, I'll just use the example that you gave of somebody who has a two-bedroom and they're, they're renting it for twenty.
Or they're advertising up to twenty, right? So that's, it's fair to say that.
Yeah, right. So going back as a short-term rental owner, we live, and I'll go back to that, we live and die by reviews. So if you, if you show up, if you show up with twenty people in a two-bedroom, and you go, what the, I thought this place could sleep twenty, right? What kind, what are you going to say as a, as somebody who's renting it? You're going to be like, this is, this was horrible. This was the worst place I ever possibly could stay at. That place will go away.
That place's ratings was not bad, uh, so, so I, like, there's, there's lots and there's-
Right. So now I'll go, now I'll go backwards again. Then I'll also look at Province Lake, so, because you mentioned them.
I guess it wasn't done, but-
So when you-
Public comments still going on.
Province Lake. So Province Lake, if you look at where all the Airbnb and VRBOs are,
Yeah.
Province Lake is one of the smallest. There are the fewest rentals on that lake. In fact, I only found four
Okay.
on that lake.
Yeah.
Versus, uh, Bello being the one with the highest.
Sure.
Pine River Pond being next, Level Lake, Great East, in that order.
Sure.
But, so, so, you know, while I certainly, you know, I'm familiar with, you know, cyanobacteria blooms, what causes them,
Yeah.
you know, phosphate, warming water temperatures, runoff from fertilizers, and unmaintained septic systems, right? Those are all major port, parts of what contributes to it. And, and in the case of Province Lake, they've got the perfect storm of all those things. They've got runoff issues, they've got outdated septic systems, they've got a very, uh, their lake is not very deep, their water is very hot, warm.
Right.
They're, they're the perfect storm of all of those contributing factors. But none of them, you know, none of those reasons are short-term rentals. So if, if, if you're going to want to address, truly want to address, issues with septic systems and lakes, then address septic systems with lakes, not short-term rentals. Right? You know, it go, so one of the things that-
And maybe just to respond to that, um, I have, in the, I think the past year or so, I had a conversation with, uh, a select board about that, because that is a health ordinance, that is not a zoning ordinance. I think based upon what I've seen this year with, with cyanobacteria blooms, maybe it's time to have another discussion around that. So not, not short-term rentals.
But listen to this. Province Lake is, and, okay, I've been here for fifty-nine years.
Yep.
And I've been part of Province Lake. And forty years ago, we were part of putting some oxygen tanks and generators into Province Lake to solve this. So this problem isn't, just isn't happening in the terms of, of small dam rental. This has been going on for a hundred years or better.
Cyanobacteria feeds on limestone first. Feed on these other things. There's the different issues that you bring to the lake, uh, your phosphorus and all this. And you have no running water, because you have a beaver dam that backs up Province Lake. And that's one of the contributing effects, it's shallow.
Yeah, we, I, my family put the, put the dam in for that lake. And yes, there's not enough water coming from that to go in it. We, when we put it in, it only raised the lake a couple of inches. And that's all. That lake, the deepest spot in that lake is seventeen feet. And the water there, as, like, this year is a perfect example, because we had no rain to refill that lake. That water is hot. It's probably eighty-nine, eighty-five degrees. And that becomes, that's what's killing that, and the oxygen in that particular lake is gone. But-
Could I ask, just from your experience?
Yes.
So, um, seems like the, not just in, in communities like, like Wakefield, but all over the country, Airbnb rentals, okay, are in every neighborhood. It's only, you can only have that because of the internet. Before the internet, that, there was no way that you could advertise, I've got two bedrooms in my house. If you're visiting from, you know, Paraguay, and you want a place to stay for a, a few days, I've got room. So, um, it seems like, I mean, I, I've been on Level Lake, um, for seventy, seventy-five years this year. There were always people that rented, you know, a week here, a week there, you know? Um, they'd use the camp, and this goes back forever.
Right.
So the whole short-term used to be, people would come rent for a week. Now the short-term is two days. Is, is that change basically what's happened to the, to the business, for lack of a better word?
The, um, so I, I rented prior to VRBO and, and Verbo and all of those, right? When, when it was not easily accessible. And, um, it certainly made the rentals more accessible to, to people from all over. You know, the, you know, how did I rent in the past? You know, you, you, you know, you posted up on the bulletin board at work, you posted around, you know, do you remember?
Wouldn't the same people tend to come back each, each year?
And, and, and that hasn't changed, right? If you look, so for my rental, you know, I've, there's twelve weeks that matter, or twelve big weeks in the summer. Of those twelve weeks, not one of those, I, I take that back, one of those weeks was rented through Airbnb. All the rest of them are repeat renters.
Yeah.
Right? That's, that's the twelve weeks in the summer. Um, in the winter, I, I rent to mostly what, what's evolved to be, which wasn't what I thought would happen, but mostly it's ice fisher, fishermen. I'm saying ice fishermen. There's families, not my thing, but it's obviously something that people do. And it's the same, I get the same three or four groups every year that rent. You know, for me, it's more work, because Airbnb, if they rent, if they go through Airbnb, Airbnb takes care of the meals and room tax and all that stuff. When they rent for me, I have to collect it, at the end of the month. Like, if I don't submit it in the next couple of days, I get an email from the state, submit your tax, you know? And I gotta write them a, you know, I gotta send them, I don't send them a check. I send them a check electronically, right? Because I collect it, I gotta pay it. Um, so it's more of a pain in the neck, but, and that's really what, you know, if you remember, like, the old days, you'd go to A and B Market, the Level Lake Market, and people would have eight-and-a-half by eleven sheets, the rental. You'd have those little tear-offs at the bottom with your phone number. I mean, so the rentals always existed. They ju, it's just done differently.
Maybe it's more accessible on-
It's more accessible, more accessible.
But it's more accessible to somebody to come in for two days and bring forty people to a, a three-bedroom house, and that was the complaint. The complaint that Dave raised was not the people that come and rent for a week. It was the occasional, a particular place that, I, I don't even know where it is, that was attracting large numbers of people coming that clearly were overtaxing the facilities. There was no way that these, whatever. So that's the complaint. It isn't, in my, for me, I don't have any problem. I, people, people should be able, if they want, if they want to rent, if they want to buy the building next door, people do that, right? The camp comes, you know, next door, needs a little work, and the price is right, you buy it, and you're going to rent it. You're not going to leave it, sit there. So, um, but, so I think that's the struggle is the, you know, the, Charlie, you raise this all the time. It's the one out of, or the two or three out of this eighty-six people that are going to cause the problem. And well, do you regulate that? Because what you're doing is you're regulating the whole business. You can't regulate just the people that cause the problem. You can only, you can, you, you, so, I mean, I think that's the dilemma of dealing with this excess
Right.
that occurs, particularly in the summer. I'm, I'm guessing, you know, holiday weekends, whatever.
Right.
That, that kind of thing.
Yeah, and it, you know, I think you're, you're touching on what is a, you know, a decision that each of you would ultimately make, right? Do, do you create regulations for the mass because you have one outlier? You know, in the example, and, you know, I, I don't know that situation.
I don't even know where it is.
I would go back and look at these other, okay, when they have forty people, are they, is it, are they noisy? Are they, you know, what, you know, are there other, there's things there that they're doing that are wrong that, that can be addressed now with regulations that exist now, without having to throw more stuff on top, on top, on top.
So you mentioned that you're, uh, if you don't send the taxes in, you get a, uh, you get an email. So is there a registration at the state level of all, all these?
So we, we're required to have a permit. So we have to have a real, so even if, so I, I rent both through all those platforms as well as direct. I have to, in order to have my house listed on Verbo and Airbnb, I have to have a state of New Hampshire.
But not to do it privately yourself?
Uh, well, I do. Yes, I have to. I, it has to be posted in my rental. So I have a, a New Hampshire meals and rental permit.
So anybody that's renting, short-term, a week at a time, a month at a time, the whole season, has to have a permit from the state?
Correct.
And is that, what, is the town have access to that?
I, that I don't-
List? No. So we don't know who those people are. Seems like creating another registration seems redundant if there's already one at the state level. But if we, if we don't have access to it, what good does it do us?
Yeah, and we have to have one. Like, we can't have our homes listed on Airbnb or Verbo without it. That, that permit number, the permit number has to be in our listings.
Okay.
And, and then the state requires us to have it posted.
Yeah.
So if you don't have a permit, are you breaking the law?
I don't know that the state has anything, you know, I don't think they have any-
No RSA?
There's no, again, Jen may know, but, you know, I'm not aware of anything that the state can do or what authority, you know, what powers they have, I guess. You know, who, who's the person that's going to knock on my door to say,
Right.
hey, you can't have that, you know, you can't do that because you don't have a permit from the state.
Well, if you're not collecting the taxes, it's, you're required, that's,
Oh, that's a problem.
that's got to be, uh-
Yeah, so, so Airbnb and VRBO collect the taxes and submit them for you.
Yeah.
It's only when you, like myself, I do it all three, you know, if you will. I, I do online platforms, and then I also book direct. So I have to not only make sure my permit number is on those sites, but I also have to make sure I, every month, I'm sending, um, the state eight-and-a-half percent.
So does, do you, so when you, when you use Verbo, or whatever that may be, or the B and B thing, do they have a requirement about lying, such as like having, I can sleep twenty when you have a two-bedroom apartment?
Yes.
Okay, so, so those of those things are occurring, like he just said,
Right.
must be from, let's say I had a house that I would just put it on the internet, on Facebook, and say, I've got a, a rental that I can sleep twenty-five people, and it's a three-bedroom house. Um, that, that's just them doing it as, on a personal level, right?
Somebody would have to complain, right? So, so, you know, that could be, I'll pick this person off, Province Lake, I have no idea what, you know? I could sit there and say, listen, Airbnb, there's a guy in my town that's, this is, this house is a two-bedroom, it can't sleep twenty. You need to take that listing down.
That's it. They have the listing. Let's say that I'm not using Verbo or B and B, and I'm just putting it on Facebook, because that seems to be where, 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 where I've seen what he said, is, I'm, I'm, I know exactly which one he, the one of them's talking about, because I, I've seen that, and it says twenty, and it's, and it's only a two-bedroom, and I get that. But that must be them doing that personally. If, if that was going through a committee or a, a private thing like you do, like the Verbo or other thing, they would have their restrictions, and that does not happen.
Facebook is the wild, wild, I mean, I, I can only speak for myself. I would never list my property on Facebook.
So just for the record, that, that example that I pointed out, like, that was on VRBO.
Oh, it was.
Yeah.
So they, so they allowed that.
But like, I, I don't think, you know, as a town of Wakefield, we, we should be relying on some commercial entity like VRBO or, you know, if we, not saying we're going to, but if we were going to, going to put in some restrictions, like, not going to leave it up to some commercial entity like Airbnb or VRBO to, to regulate, that doesn't make sense to me. Not saying we have to put anything in, I'm just saying, like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mean on that. I, I will go back to, like, your, your statement about, um, you know, septic systems. Like, to me, like, that's an issue, and I think you're right. Like, don't address it by just going after, like, these small number of, uh, short-term rental properties. If this true, that's truly an issue, like, address, address every property. So I, I agree, like, don't, don't point to-
Which the state is just, you know, in the last year, took a baby step in that, you know, I should say, they took a step in that direction by requiring, right? Because, you know, one of the common, you know, was, oh, well, you know, people are, they're buying up these cabins, and then they're turning them into VRBOs, and they're, you know, dumping all this, well, if that's happening, if they're changing hands, those septics are being inspected.
Right, right. Yeah, and so you, I, I think that's a great step. That's a step in the right direction.
And so I, and, you know, every year, the state legislature spends a lot of time on this topic. You know, they have, because it's- You know, they have, because it's it's the amount of ambiguity between all these RSAs that I listed off and how they all fit in and and fit together is what's led to all these huge lawsuits and it's big money. These, you know, so.
Yeah. So so there's like, there's two other things that.
I'm sorry.
Keep my hand up. That's it. This is the right way to do it, right?
He started stand up quite a while.
I just, I I'm not against Airbnbs, but when it brought up a good discussion topic, you know, it's to the fact that if it does raise the value of a home when you go to sell it, because it's got that value, right? And if all the lakefront properties became Airbnbs, how does that cure any kind of housing crisis? How does it allow people to purchase into that, you know, to get onto that property that are local people? It doesn't help them. But it brings up a good discussion about it all. The septic thing, like you said, there's laws that have changed and passed. And and Province Lake, I get calls all the time, conservation wise, that there's stuff leaching in and they're just like, he said, there's a lot of outhouses there and a lot of old septics. But the one thing that it did bring up was like, that I thought about was that there are kind of hotels. And if we continue to cover all of our lakefront with Airbnbs, if that's the way it ever turned out, we're not near that, you know what I mean? But if it progressed into something like that, there's a zoning ordinance come into play where you say a portion, percentage or whatever has to be still for low to moderate income people. You know, because every town has, it has, it has to fit with the mass. There's a lot, like you said, a lot, it gets real deep.
It does. I I will share with you.
And there is public occupancy.
My house being an Airbnb does not add any value to it. There's no.
Personal value.
There's, there's no.
Taxation wise, it doesn't add value.
I mean, I'm not doing it, I'm not doing it for kicks and giggles. I mean, I'm doing it to pay my taxes.
If all the lakefront properties took in $4,000 a week for Airbnbs, the value of your house is as a commercial almost, I'm not, you know, I'm just saying, it brings up the value of it, you know?
I I I'm not so sure.
That's a marketing thing. You can't go by what the town assesses your property as.
It doesn't. I'll just tell you, it doesn't. The fact that my house is a short term rental does not add value to that property. Not at all. I mean, the only value I would say is that, go back, I mean, it's, it's, well.
Well, I think he's, I think he's, I think he's just stating that it adds value because it's, 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 it's an income. It's a second income that you can get by living in this house, renting this one, you get quite a bit of value out of that house. Right? Because it's not cheap to be a B and B rental.
That's why I do it, right?
You're subsidizing your income. You're subsidizing your income, being retired, you, it helps. Absolutely. That's the value that I think he's targeting, or at least I would be targeting.
Right, it's not, it's not, maybe I misunderstood.
Your house costs more money.
My house is not worth more because I have an Airbnb.
But it might be worth something to me saying, wow, if I bought that house, I'd have that as second income because it's rental.
Well, again, I think that, you know, in the, a couple of the examples that I gave and and some folks that have reached out to me that I think are are on Zoom tonight. You know, there's people who, you know, it's that stretch, right? It's that person that buys that house on the lake. And it's a stretch for them financially and they say, oh, you know what, we can swing this if, you know, we use it on these weekends and we use it for a couple of weeks ourselves in the summer and then we rent it the other three or four weeks in the summer. You know what? That's, you know, now we can swing by in that lake.
That's just going on forever.
Um, and so I think that's, you know, my situation was more like you, you know, I think somebody said it earlier. The house next door, we came up at a foreclosure auction and I bought it.
Now what do you do with it? Right? So you live in one next door.
Some good questions. Some good discussion.
So so a couple of things, if it's okay, just that I wanted to touch on, and and some of this is coming from what Dave had talked about. Where there were some concerns on some properties that folks were overspilling as far as parking onto the camp roads or the roads that are, that feed these short term rentals that that the.
There's a safety aspect to it.
I mean, I, sure, possibly, but, right, either safety and or congestion and, you know, that was something that, like, I don't know, should.
But we have a mechanism for that. We call the police department, they come out, and if you're blocking the thing, that's what they're supposed to do.
But if it's a private road, can they?
They should be, can, you, yes, absolutely.
If a police, if a fire truck can't get by, they sure could, yeah.
But in fact, a fire truck, they just push it out, yeah?
Yeah, this is just, I'm trying, I'm not, I'm trying not to like, to throw like opinion out there.
None of us are the ones that brought it up.
Right, right. But from from how it was described to me, there were certain properties that on a regular basis, and it may not be that they're blocking traffic from a fire truck, but on a regular basis, there are cars that are spilling out onto, you know, the parking, not on the property itself, but beyond the property. And is that something that with zoning, that could be regulated? Or should it be regulated? Because I'm not so sure right now, other than if it's a true safety hazard, if there's anything that could be done. Now, I'm gonna go back to what we talked about, if this is a, you know, a one or two individual, you know, whatever, buildings or residences that this is happening on, like, does that constitute a need for us to, you know, put regulations out there for everyone else? I'm not really sure. But just, that was something that Dave had brought up and just wanted to put it out there. People want to talk about it, that's great. If you want to leave it, that's fine too.
I say, I say, anything that's with more regulations is always an issue.
I understand your.
Did you, did you just say that, Charlie? Yes. I can't believe you said that. You've never said that before.
I was waiting for him to say that.
Not that I don't believe in rules, I just believe overregulating. You got to let people do things and especially on, I believe in complete homestead. I don't believe that anybody should be able to tell you what to do with your own home. Now, I believe that maybe the visual of something is is an issue. But to tell me that I have to go get a permit to to put in a a new kitchen in my house is completely wrong to me. But I follow these rules because this is what we have standards. That's why I'm saying, as 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 the board members that make these things, I'd like to see us be more careful on room regulating so that people can do things with their homes. Now, I don't want to cause problems with others, by all means. I believe in respect for your neighbor. But again, you just said it, one or two, there's always gonna be the four or five people that could give a crap about their neighbor. I know that. I see it on a daily basis. And but I, that's why I say, I don't think we should penalize others because of a few. If this was happening with every one of them, then maybe we have an issue. But right now, I think things are still good and I think I admire the people, because I got friends that do the same thing as you do. And I see it and they need to do it because their taxes on these lakes, 10, $20,000.
You look at Mary Mead Lake, it's $14,000 to live on that lake right now. That's what the property taxes are.
So I get it.
So my guess is that the problem is going to not get worse going forward with Airbnbs? A house near where I live, quarter acre lot on the lake, sold for $750,000. House is ripped down and somebody is spending, I don't know, many hundreds of thousands of dollars to build a house on it. So another one was just listed near me, a million seven fifty for a, you know, it's a good sized house. It's got a fair amount of water. It's a nice, nice lot. But, I mean, that's happened in the last relatively short time. The price of these waterfront properties.
Right. You are exactly correct.
No one is gonna throw $3 million into a waterfront property and and rent it Airbnb. That isn't gonna happen.
You are thinking the problem's gonna get less. The economics do not work.
Yeah, you know, that's a very good point. They maybe did a few years ago.
They did during, they did during COVID.
Yeah, yeah.
That was about, you know, in other words, there was just, you know, one of the outcomes of all of that is that nobody went anywhere. So where did they all came? They all came here.
It's funny because they still haven't left.
Geez, that's not.
They're on Route 16.
Yeah, but the economics today, to your point, you can't, you can't buy that property and rent it for what we get for rentals. You know, I, my place is on a lake. I, it's, I think it's a nice place. You can't, I can't get enough for that rental. If I had to go out and have, you know, I have a mortgage on it because it's 20, but it's not much because I've had it for 25 years. So, you know, but but I couldn't cover the, if I was, if I just bought it two years ago, there's no way I could.
There's some that are $14,000 a month. That would pay it off in 10 years.
Yes, there is some that are like that, but you're not gonna find that.
I'm just saying, it is in Wakefield. I'm just saying, but I'm just saying.
$14,000 a month for three months. And that's if you're lucky. Could you, could you get that? That you'd be at the upper end of that, of the market in short term rentals to get that?
I'd be damned if you think you're gonna have people that would disrespect anybody with that, that can afford to put that.
Right. And and I'm that way. I mean, there's, you know, I mean, in my 20 years, I have had one renter that was abusive to my property and all that. I don't know why somebody thinks that they can put a propane gas grill on my beach and put firewood in it and barbecue. I don't understand that.
Talking like a timeshare. That's what these things are.
So I'm not sure if it was abuse or stupidity. I'm just saying, I would say I had a little of both.
But but I think back to your point, four years ago, there were properties that might have been selling for even 600,000 that maybe would potentially be economically viable to rent. That same property today is at least double that, which is insane.
I mean, it doesn't solve the immediate problem that Dave brought up.
Yeah. So so maybe, maybe a good end to this discussion tonight is, you know, there are people out in the public that are either watching this or will watch this. If there are situations that people are having that are big challenges, like, come in and talk to us. Maybe there's something that either we or working with code enforcement potentially could do to help solve some things. To me, it sounds like the board is on the side right now of, there's, there's not enough issues going on to make, that makes any sense to put some regulation, especially seeing that where the state is all over the map.
Yeah.
And it would be potentially risky or we could do something that we shouldn't be allowed, that we might not be allowed to do if we put something in.
You wait for state legislation.
It sounds more like it's isolated incidents. It's not a common practice.
But I don't want to leave it as, if there are some specific issues, if somebody wants to come forth and have a discussion with us, I think it's worthwhile. And if we want to tell people, they should come in and talk to us. Maybe they need to first start to start talking with, you know, code enforcement, but if there's something that.
The police or the police.
Or the police, right?
I mean, I'd say they should step back.
But but I don't, I don't want to just philanthically say that, you know, we wouldn't consider something if it was deemed that it could be helpful and not very harmful for the other 90 plus percent. Right? Is that, I think that's fair.
Good dog.
Yeah, basically, what Tom described is that is you have to be held to a hotel standard. That's exactly what you described, the meal tax, all that to the T was a hotel standard.
Oh, even, I would even say higher than that. I mean, it's, I, my rental is a heck of a lot cleaner than a hotel. But it is, you, you know, again, we, if 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 you don't have a rating that's a 4.8 to 5.0, you're not gonna, nobody's gonna rent. The 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 standard is that high. If you're, if you're a four, four star rented.
Not for a girl like me.
Nobody's gonna stay there.
They'll be there.
Anyway, thank you all for the time. I really appreciate you for coming in and.
That was helpful.
Thanks.
Hey, Tom. See you tomorrow.
So next is approval of minutes from August 21st.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Um, next meeting date is September 18th. Do we have anything on the agenda?
No.
So I will, like I said, I'm gonna have a conversation with Peter next week. And so don't know if it will be September 18th or not, but at some point, um, would like to hopefully invite him in to have a discussion with us about maybe some other zoning, I'm gonna say additions, gotta be careful. Maybe more adjustments or or clarifications, like a lot of times. So Charlie, just like, a lot of times what we see is the need to clarify things because there are things that sometimes are confusing and do not help out.
Completely, unpractical. No, I agree. One hundred percent. Clarification is all.
Sure. So like, let's see what he may, he may want to talk to us about.
What if E5 was just finalized today? In housing? Yeah.
Yeah.
E5.
85 new laws?
Changes.
How many got taken away?
No, they, those went through today.
No, but I'm saying, how many got taken away?
Oh, I don't know.
Probably zero.
I think there should be one for one, at least.
So before, before we adjourn, I probably should have asked this earlier, this, I know people on, is there anyone online that had anything that they wanted to to talk about? All right, so anybody?
Yeah, you do.
Oh, okay.
How you doing?
And and can you state your name?
Yep, Julie.
Okay, and.
Julie what?
Julie Varis.
Thank you.
Okay, and and are you a resident or a property owner in town? And then what what would you like to discuss?
Yeah, we're a property owner in town. Um, we've been renting on Airbnb, Verbo and direct bookings for about seven years now. And I just want to say that Tom did an amazing job for all of us. And, you know, I, I'm speaking on behalf of many responsible short term rental hosts in Wakefield. You know, we already follow state laws, zoning and safety requirements, and we take pride in maintaining our homes in a very high standard. Because like what Tom said, the reviews, that's everything. If we're not maintaining our homes, we don't get the reviews and we don't get rentals. So, um, you know, my family, we, we spend a lot of time out there, but we're not there all the time. We live in Massachusetts, we work, we have kids, I have kids in college. So, you know, we rented out to offset costs of, you know, our mortgage, our taxes and so on and so forth. You know, so it's just, you know, the thought of regulating a lot of this stuff in Wakefield is just, it it's a little scary to us just because it is our home. We're very respectful of our neighbors. Um, all of our neighbors have our phone number. We have had, oh my gosh, we've had probably over 500 stays, 500 five star stays. And we've probably had three stays that were not so great. And our neighbors know us and they call us and we're up there, we live an hour and 15 minutes away, we drive up. We've had, you know, but it's very, very far and few in between. Um, we're on Bellow Lake, there is. So I I just want to clarify something with the, um, the amount of guests that people are allowed. You are only allowed to put a number of guests that coincide with the number of beds that are in the home. And what Tom was saying too, like, if you had 20 guests or a limit of 20 guests and you only have a two or three bedroom home, those guests are not gonna be too happy. So you're just, you're not gonna do that. And in a search on Verbo and Airbnb for a place to stay in Wakefield for 16, 20 guests, there are none. So I, I, you know, there are, there have been a couple of incidents, you know, within our association where, you know, there's been trouble with maybe one or two homes renting or having, you know, noise complaints and stuff like that. But for the majority, there's never been an issue. And if there are issues, they're addressed pretty quickly. So like I said, I am speaking for a number of hosts that I'm, I've become really close friends with. Going back on what Tom said, you know, the economy, you know, just having those people up there, you know, it's the cleaners, the HVAC, the maintenance, the landscapers, the, you know, Wakefield disposal, um, the restaurants. I mean, I have a guidebook that, you know, I tell them everywhere to go in the area. And I've also had a number of guests that have stayed with me over the years that have ended up purchasing homes on the lake as well because they loved it so much and they wouldn't have had that. wouldn't have had that experience or opportunity if it weren't for them being able to come and stay at one of my, you know, my home. So, um, I just wanted to kind of put that out there, um, and, you know, I hope that there's nothing gonna come of this or any regulations. We are regulated already, um, I have proper insurance, which is our rental insurance, and they ding me for anything and everything. I mean, I've had to build, make sure that there's railings on, you know, like a two-step decline, like it, you know, it shouldn't even really be that much of an issue, but I mean, they are very, very strict. So, um, you know, we have carbon monoxide, um, fire dete- detectors, um, you know, it's e- everything, we have to have, um, fire extinguishers in certain places. Everything is already regulated enough through our insurance, through Airbnb, Verbo, um, where we can't even have our places be available without these, without these things in place. So, I just wanted to put my two cents in, um, I was on the last meeting as well, and, um, you know, I'm just kind of paying close attention to it because, you know, my husband and I, we have five kids, we have two grandkids, we've got dogs, you know, the whole reason that we purchased up there in the first place was to have a place to come with our family, and we use it quite a bit, just when we're not out there. We love to rent it out, it helps pay for it, and it's just been a blessing for our family, so, that's all I have to say.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else? All right, um, Jen, do you have anything else before we adjourn?
Um, maybe. I mean, I'm really, I'm, I'm trying to, like, it's, you'd ask me to post some examples, I did post some examples. Um, I think I have some, I, I, well, I'm, I'm not gonna be the popular person here with what I'm about to say. I don't think short-term rentals are allowed in, uh, under your current zoning, period. They're not a listed use in your per, table of permitted uses. And when you look at, um, Article thirty-four, uses and structures not permitted or prohibited, it says, like, if it's not listed, it's prohibited. Short-term rentals are not a listed use in your table of uses.
So, so...
Yeah, so that's just kind of a, I was just sitting here and listening, I kind of did some like looking, reading, and, and, and trying to figure out what the current lay of the land is here.
All right, so some, some questions around that then?
Yeah.
So, um, as Tom had mentioned, like, um, short-term rentals are considered residential...
No, they are not. It's a commercial prop enterprise. It's not residential. It's taxed differently. It's taxed as a commercial, it, it, it's subject to meals and rooms. It is, it is transient, in nature, it's not, um...
RSA, you're RSA, I said it was RSA forty-eight dash A, somebody called I, section five.
Yeah, no, I understa, I know that, I'm, I'm citing guidance from municipal association that's from their attorneys.
Municipal association can't stand on short-term rentals.
I, I, yeah, they have, they have members that have troubles with them, that are, other communities that have bigger, bigger problems, um, than what Wakefield has experienced. I, and, like, I will say, I, I don't, I don't have a position here personally. I, my obligation is to you, the town, to, you know, keep you on the up and up and legal.
So why is...
What I would say, Doug, is you really should send this to your own attorney, just to figure out the current situation. The conversation, I think, has opened a can of worms, that you need to get some clarification from your own attorney at this point.
I can, I can do that.
So again, we're gonna spend money for stupidness. This has been happening...
Thank you, Charlie.
Years, we've been doing this, the president has already, the president's has already been set, I wouldn't be listening to that. I, I would rather, I would rather we make our decision ourselves. We don't need Trafford County to tell us how to run Wakefield.
She was just stating what the law says right now.
I'm, I'm telling you what your zoning ordinance says and what the law says, that's all I'm doing. You guys can do whatever you want.
Right, so the risk there, Charlie, is that some aggravated property owner comes in to, uh, Peter on Monday and says, this is not allowed, you, you, you make them stop.
Could it be grandfathered?
Let me talk, let me talk to the attorney.
That's something that you need to ask your attorney about.
Let me talk to the...
Yeah, it's quite possible that some are pre-existing non-conforming uses, um, and that, that is quite possible.
There's so many towns that do that, I mean, not just with lakes, I can't imagine, it's gonna be against...
Let me, let me, let me check.
Well, it isn't against the law, it's, the problem is, our zoning is the type of zoning that says...
Right.
If it doesn't list the use...
Correct.
Then the, it's not allowed.
Yes.
That's specific to our zoning, so...
Right.
There's nothing that says it's okay to do short-term rentals.
Yeah.
It's a, it's not a permitted use, so we need to deal with that. We can't ignore it, because the town has more legal liability if we ignore it.
Right, right.
So getting, getting a, an opinion from the attorney is, that's the way to go, because he's the one that would be defending us if we get sued.
If I tell you, Dick, what, you're welcome to use my house next week for a month, and you say, that'd be great, you come use my house for a month, that's not legal?
It's under our zoning, Charlie.
But I'm just saying, do you feel that that would, if I suggested...
Can I respond to that?
You live in Mass...
Yeah.
I'm, I'm asking a question, please don't interrupt me. I'm asking you, that if you, you said, Charlie, I'm coming up, you live in, I don't know, Texas, you said, I'd love to come to Wakefield and hang out for a month, you said, would you, you're not in your house this week, for the next month, would you be willing to let me use it, or, or I'd give you a, I'd give you a donation?
I get you.
Would you, would, do you feel that that's like...
That's great, that, that's not a problem for me, that's a problem for you. If the zoning doesn't allow it, one of your neighbors decides to sue you because, or the town, because you're doing something with your property which the zoning doesn't permit, that's the issue. It's not a question of whether it's good or bad, I, I have no problem with short-term rentals.
Yeah, I understand.
Personally, okay? And, and I would not be voting to put in more regulations, but if our zoning doesn't allow it, and we now open the can of worms on television...
Mm-hmm.
That anybody who's got a gripe about, um, a short-term rental now believes that maybe it isn't allowed.
Yeah, we just opened the can of worms.
So, if it's in your grandfathering, this thing's in zoning now that, uh, not permitted that is still happening here, because zoning...
That may be the case, but then that wouldn't allow anybody to start something new.
That's true.
So, we, we need to address the issue, it's on the table, it's been publicly discussed, we, we, we need to follow through on it.
Jen, do you have anything else? Did you want to add anything else?
Sure, I was just gonna clarify the distinction between, um, short-term rental versus having house guests. Anybody is perfectly welcome to have house guests, it's when you have a transient population that is coming and going, and you are charging rent on a commercial basis, that, and you become subject to the meals and rooms tax, that's different. Um, and you have to re- recognize that those things are different. There, a- and it also comes down to you, under the Zoning Enabling Act, do you have the legal authority, and you are within your, your rights as a municipality to regulate the use of land. In it, that's, it's just something you can do, and it doesn't constitute a constitutional taking to establish ordinances that protect health, safety, and welfare. That's what it comes down to. So, so just a couple of things to keep in mind there, there, um, in those distinctions.
So, just...
I wanted to, I also wanted to just mention a procedural item, um, a, and that, um, and again, I'm not gonna be the popular person here, I, you, you have a lot of comments in the chat that you, the planning board, do not have access to right now. And your residents who are participating virtually are sharing comments with the expectation that you have these, um, and you have, you are able to view them. I'm not normally on Zoom, um, and, like, the board knows, I'm currently out of the state, and I'm participating remotely. Otherwise, I also would not be seeing these comments in the chat. So I've been copying all of them, and I'm pasting them down into an email that I'm gonna send to you, Doug and Amber, so that you have them. But I think in the future, just a procedural thing, you either need to clearly state upfront that you don't have access to the Zoom chat, or you need to, like, someone who's sitting close to the TV needs to turn around and read all of the comments, or you need to disable the comments, or disable the chat, um, just something for future, yeah.
Yep, understood, thank you.
It's, okay.
Yep, appreciate that. One, maybe just a clarifying question, Jen. Is there a distinction between short-term rentals and longer-term, like, a lease, month over a month? Is that, is that a distinction? Because we don't, we don't preclude people from renting out their house?
You do not. But when you, yeah, and I think there's gotta be something that's a definitional, um, thing out there, and I'm just not sure what it is, off, you know, off the cuff.
Okay, all right. And, and I guess just, let me state, this is my own opinion, and not the board's, none of this, I, from my perspective, I have no intention whatsoever of trying to eliminate short-term rentals in the town of Wakefield, okay? This, this, um, might there be some point, at some point where there might, it might be worthwhile to put some regulations? Maybe, the board would have to do that. So I, I don't want anyone to come out of this meeting tonight being concerned about, oh no, like this is, we're gonna end short-term rentals in Wakefield. If there is something that comes up from a discussion with the attorney saying, we need to add something to our zoning, I think the board needs to talk about that, and I think we would need to get something on the, on the warrant for, um, the next vote. And at least from my perspective, I would be doing everything to get something on there, so it would be allowed if we need to do something. So I just want to state that, that's my own opinion, that's not the board's, but I want people to hopefully, you know, to leave here tonight not being like, maybe overly concerned that something...
Yeah.
Is going to drastically change.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate that.
If that makes sense.
I do appreciate that.
Um, and then just...
Yeah, thank you, Doug.
Sorry, what, Jen, did you have something?
Oh, no, I was just gonna follow on what you just said and say thank you, like, my point in, in mentioning that it's not in your permitted use table is not to say that, like, it shouldn't be permitted, like, it's, it's just to call it out that it's not listed, so that's like, an, a moment where we need to take a pause here, and it, you know, like you said, at a minimum, get that in there as a use, and say that it is permitted, if that is the, you know, the board and the town's pleasure.
Yeah, yeah, understood. All right, um, interesting meeting. So, uh, anyone, anything else?
Can you forward the comments on to everybody? It's on the board.
Can you do this? Jen, can you send the comments to, um, to Amber, and then Amber, send them out to everyone?
I will do that.
Okay, all right, um, if nothing else, would anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you, everyone.